Not this year, we can't estimate a figure for that.
This is now, this wasn't for band concerts, was it?
This, yes.
It was, wasn't it?
And the reason it was run over is because um we had the staff thing.
Yes.
The staff agencies, also we did have a lot of co-option. Also the advertising of the contracts for the toilets and the grounds maintenance. So we did add the band concerts, so that's been quite a lot.
Why doesn't the band concert come out?
Because there was an advertising budget, we took advantage of it. It was appropriate to use an advertising budget for advertising.
Sauce spoons out, sauce spoons out of the same pot, isn't it?
Absolutely.
Well, different shakespeare's.
Martin?
Yeah, I was just gonna raise that point because some of it did actually come out of the promotions group's budget. But I wondered if it was being made official that their advertising for next year is gonna come out of advertising budget.
Well, I think because we won't be doing the biggest output without we advertising for Clark, that was like a thousand pounds. So in that fact, I'm hoping that we're not gonna go through that again this year, next year. Or the foreseeable future full stop. So I would say that that probably we could squeeze that down to any three thousand. Or maybe even to an half, but certainly.
And also get two going out to Tendring as well.
Last year, which we won't be doing.
Well, this year.
Which won't be happening next year because they've been done. So that's what I think we could, we could shave five hundred pounds off that one easily. And I think we'll still be able to budget, come on, it's a channel.
We might have to advertise for.
Assistant?
Assistant.
Job centre. So I would propose three thousand. Certainly fine.
We're all keen.
I didn't get you up with my pen now.
Anything you can save money on's a political win, Dave.
Adam, Paul, all those in favour?
Everyone there, there we go.
That's unanimous. Uh planting and tree surgery, thirteen and a half thousand in the budget. We spent three thousand, not sure what is left to spend. Based on what we have spent, we reduced that to six thousand. I'm sure that Joyce will have a comment to make on that.
Because we have done very little to the trees this last year, very little. Because the Clark and Co have been very busy doing other things, and I appreciate that. There will be a lot of tree work.
I'm telling you.
There will be a lot, even though last year we didn't spend very much. And that is the reason why, is because the Clark and the chairman and the vice chair, deputy mayor or whatever his title is, have been busy with other things. And this has been put on the back burner so often. And I would suggest six thousand, but please, we might have to come back for more. Because we've inherited about another forty on Constance Drive, something like that.
Also as well, the reason, I think who started that it was high is because we used to employ a company to. Um but we're now, that paper's gonna be coming to council in February. Where our C C will be doing it for us and it is a fraction of.
I hope, we hope.
Yeah, if it gets resolved. And it is a fraction of what the previous company used to charge us.
I would come support Joyce in leaving it at six thousand.
Absolutely, we've just got to be careful.
Martin?
I would have liked to have seen a proper figure. Because last year it was just guessed in this, in this same room that I put the figure forward. And we hadn't spent ten thousand of it. And we have, and we have, I know it's been explained, but I was just saying that I hope that it will be enough and that it will get done this year. Because I've seen the email from the gentleman complaining from the Oirelans.
Also, we can't predict, but also we cannot predict whether a tree will come down back where they're likely to be cut.
Joyce, are you proposing?
Can I just say, it's an ongoing thing with trees, they always grow. So you've got to keep them in shape for God's sake. Right?
It's, it is.
Are you happy with six thousand pounds?
But with a caveat, we might have to come back for more.
Yeah, well, we've got it again, if a tree comes, if they all fall down in a gale, we have got.
We may not cover what we're going to do with six thousand.
Yes, but we have got, we have got reserves. If, if unexpected happens, Joyce, we have got reserves.
Thank you.
David?
I was gonna say, yeah, I was gonna say the same thing, we have got reserves and we can, as I proposed, we've not lasted meeting before. We could always then put this into the budget of a couple of years to recoup any, any large losses. So, so yeah, I mean, if the tree wardens happy in that, then.
You're proposing?
Proposing six thousand with a caveat, but we might have to come back.
David second, all those in favour? Against, six four one against. What are we now, additional maintenance?
What's that cover?
This is, this is a whole maintenance, it's not covered by other maintenance.
And I think they say.
Does that cover the painting and decorating?
Yeah, that'd be.
Yes, to have a sprinkling, I was gonna say, disgrace.
But we did have the benches painted this year.
Sorry, say yeah.
The benches, the benches were painted this year.
We spent a five thousand so far.
Or is that, or you did under maintenance to those?
No, it's pretty normal.
If you had the benches painted, wouldn't that come on the street and park furniture, the bench and maintenance?
I could do, I could do additional.
Yeah, the, I think street park furniture, the purchase.
Purchase, should be absolutely purchased.
Yeah, we had an additional bin this year, um and a bench, I think. But yeah, um.
I, I believe that, I believe, drop the rope, I believe, um that we're gonna be reviewing our grid bins this year. And we'll be, we will be incurring some substantial costs on refilling them.
Absolutely.
So that seven thousand, that would be making sense to leave it as it is.
And also, and we might have to be purchasing them as well.
And might, to purchase a grid bin is only a couple of, about two hundred pounds. Filling them is not quite as much.
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three, is it? Oh, okay, there you go, even better.
What about, what about uh um litter bins?
Yeah, and also we, if um the litter bins as well, um.
Some of the litter bins are really broken. It's shabby.
That comes under street furniture. Next one then.
So hang on there, so we need to do the additional maintenance.
So this not maintenance, so I would, I would be happy with the seven thousand. Because it's two thousand more this year.
So Adam's proposed it, David's seconded it, all those in favour? Unanimous? Now, next one, um events have overtaken slightly. We had seven thousand pounds in the budget, we spent very little of it. Uh thinking of street furniture, we had anticipated that the county council were going to redevelop the town centre. In which case they would put in new ventures and they were, they would discuss with us, it was time to have. But it now appears that the, they have now decided not to redevelop the town centre.
How do we know that?
Uh on their website, on their website. Because reporting the newspaper has been confirmed on their website today, but who cares?
It's about the recognition was about, they mentioned something about, they all did mention about that, but it didn't elaborate.
Today they did.
I wonder if that's what it was.
Nine thirty.
Whether the two things are linked is some position, but yes, the leader, the former leader has resigned. And they put a statement out on their website today to say that they are not now going to redo it at the town centre.
They're not gonna be doing the one-way system, it doesn't mean they're not gonna be doing something though, which could still include it.
Does say that on the website.
They're not doing the one-way system.
No, they're not, they're not doing, they're not redeveloping the town, I go with the actual wording. But it's not just the one-way system, it, the wording actually is, they're not.
Two, two.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm agreeing with you completely, I read the statement.
So if they're not doing anything.
Develop to.
If they're not doing anything, then our assumption that they'll be putting benches in, in the high street is no longer there. So you may want to bear that in mind when considering the two.
No, I say, Adam, but we've always.
Let, let Mark, let Mark say anything next, I've finished.
It's, it's a bit contradictory actually, their statement. Because it says that the, the acting leader has halted everything and nothing's gonna happen. And then further down you read it, it actually says that they will do essential things and will discuss other things with other partners. So it's at the moment, I think we just have to be cautious of what's going to happen.
Yeah, and next week they could change your mind again.
But I, what I get confused about chairman is like, how do we earmark that seven thousand pounds? Well, six thousand five hundred that we haven't spent, that's what, but that's the meme, does it just vanish?
That, no, that, that, there's seven thousand pounds, whatever money doesn't get spent, it goes automatically to the general reserves.
Okay, well, that's helpful to know, but it, I wondered if it should be earmarked reserves, like for street park furniture, which helps with the other issue we have.
Well, we can't do that.
If we could use the budget again.
We've gone earmarked as a, we'd have to revise the earmark reserve budget.
Anyway, we're talking about this budget.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of nitpicking there.
I, I would like um to propose that we consider maybe an increase based on today's announcement.
Above the two thousand?
Personally, because um I, I'm not sure of the figure, I want some collective input. On the basis that I personally think as, we aren't gonna get the investment in the town that we were all hoping for. Or certainly I was hoping for. Um it might be an idea that we make a proactive statement in the areas that we control, such as cuts close, to do some extensions to things like the path work that we're doing, maybe refresh the lighting, put in some more benches as is proposed. We're talking about the goalposts tomorrow. I, I actually think, I, I would, I would certainly like to see it more in, in line with last year than, and that if we don't spend it, then we put it to reserves.
Before we take that as a, let's go on to the others.
Thank you, Jenny, I mean, I was, I was gonna say something very similar to what Nick said. Um but I was wondering that if, if the county council aren't doing anything in the high street, is there nowhere we could actually provide some seats and new bins with our crest on? And say, yeah, right, county council are gonna do this, but your town council are thinking of you, looking after you. And it's an ideal opportunity for us to spend a little bit more money that we didn't spend last year. Spend it this year and let's do something down the high street bins.
Painting the land.
Anything, anything, we could do anything.
Right, can I say, there is a rolling programme of replacing the seats, these concrete seats. They're not, they're not adequate for the elderly population as it stands. Those concrete seats, people need arms at the end of the seats to get them out. And that's why we're, we're trying, we have been doing it for about ten years, a rolling programme now to get rid of the concrete seats. However, however, the concrete seat at Long Row was a replacement because it was broken, it was cracked. So we did a replacement at Long Row and the rolling programme was outside Wheelcoats. There are, there's another one outside Wheelcoats, there's one outside Weatherspoons, I can never say that name. Weatherspoons, there's some more at the level crossings and this will take about another five years. So we're talking about for every seat that we replace, it's about a thousand pounds. Yes, Alison?
Yeah, fitting as well, yeah.
Ah, fitting. We have got some more in cuts close, people cannot get out of those concrete seats. So I don't know how many more there are in cuts close that need replacing, Adam, do you?
No.
Okay, then.
And we have got broken bins, I've been on about the bins. There's one bin that's so broken, we've got weeds coming out of the top. People need to be more observant.
Right, thank you.
And we've got, the bins are, are there?
I think, I think really then you're supporting, I think you're then supporting what Nick is proposing. Nick, Nick's proposing we leave the budget at seven thousand.
As a minimum, yeah.
Yeah.
As a minimum.
Your proposal, Nick?
Yeah, unless anyone thinks more is appropriate, I just, I just think we need to invest in our town personally this year.
Okay, so are we happy with seven thousand pounds?
I will put it up a bit. And can I say, why I have said about the rolling programme is so that people understand what it was all about. Okay, so another five years, we might have completed it.
Well, we have one proposal of seven thousand pounds.
I will go up.
Do we have any, any other proposals? Martin, you have a proposal?
Well, I'm not too keen on spending money, but um but for a good thing like this, I'm happy to see an increase. And as Joyce's benches, the council did actually stop the rolling programme when Richard was here because of the cost, but it should be looked at again. Because we need to uniform the town, we need decent bins. And to be fair to the clerk, when I pointed out to, eventually she did replace the one in cuts close that I reported. And that's what the five hundred and sixty-six pounds is, but we need an inspection of all our changes before we can decide a figure, unfortunately.
Do you wish, would you like to, I'm inviting you if you want to, to increase your proposal?
Uh yeah, yes, based on members' feedback, I propose it going up to ten thousand.
So that's your proposal?
Yes.
Joyce seconds that, all those in favour? Right, so that's, that's, that's up to ten thousand. Okay, and now, as, as, can I just remind them, we need to bring that as an agenda paper.
I don't think they use it.
You're a very good suggestion, we need to bring that on the agenda paper, there is so much, otherwise time for.
And, and sorry, can I just say one other thing? We can always ask Rutland County Council to match funding.
Okay, where's the equipment maintenance? We've doubled, we've doubled, we just have doubled what we spent, what we budgeted for last year.
We're ready to go with repairs, isn't it?
Loads and loads of repairs.
So we thought we'd have a double work.
And also the park equipment is getting older.
Breaking.
Yeah.
What, what's getting out?
The park equipment.
Cuts close, the original equipment.
There was a lot of wet pour this year, which, which that was.
That was rubbish.
Which, which, um and quite a bad bit. And also the little mushroom seed in, in um, in cuts close, that was an awful lot of money.
Yeah.
So we felt it was proven to be a long one, yeah.
Yeah. Have we got mushroom?
Are we happy with that? Any, any other comments? No, no, no proposal, David proposes eight thousand, Joyce seconds it, all those in favour? Unanimous? Next one, late night shopping, uh we budgeted a thousand this year, we haven't spent anything yet, but we anticipate getting money.
They haven't claimed it yet.
Haven't claimed it yet, um and we felt we're gonna keep it the same next year.
Can I, I'm just asking, because to me, this is all part of the promotions group. Which, no, I'm just saying to me, that should have all been, and I just wondered why we go to separate late night shopping, but then that. If I'm speaking out of turn, I apologize now, was, was the late night shopping hijacked? Or was the Christmas hijacked by another organization?
No, no, every year, I'm just, sorry, I'm just quoting before you chirp off, but um every year the town council gets a request from the town partnership to give them a thousand pounds to do, to help them run the event, because they've always run late night shopping and we've just been caught a match for a store holder. Yeah, um so in previous years, a thousand pounds has gone towards hiring a special bus that everybody used. And other years it's gone to advertising, that didn't seem to hit the mark. But the fact they do do it with no budget of their own, because they don't have an income as well, so the town council allocate a thousand pounds to go towards late night shopping, which the town partnership spent to benefit of being.
If I'm, if I'm, it's probably not the right place, probably need to do this at a full council meeting, but to me, the late night shopping was too weak, too late. Everybody, everybody had already.
You think that's David, that?
But just, and I'm just wondering whether.
It's not, it's not an event we organize.
I know.
So it's another organization.
I just wonder whether that thousand pounds is being well spent or whether we, whether we say we don't give that money to the partnership and we, we put it into our promotions budget to do our own thing.
I'll be able to answer that question because I'll be going to a meeting soon with their, with their governance team to find out what income they made on the night. And I can bring that back to the council so we can budget it.
It will, I couldn't, I can't remember the figure, because I was at the meeting last night, but that, that will be in the minutes.
We'd have a paper back before we'd give them that money anyway, wouldn't we?
Yeah.
Because they asked for a request, but we can budget it, but it doesn't mean you have to give it to them. That's, that's fine, yeah, okay, some of these.
Martin?
No, I, I'm never happy with this because it doesn't always come to council and the partnership just assume they get the money.
No, that's, that's, sorry, I dropped there because that does not.
No, we've had an argument about this every Christmas, we get an argument about this.
It is not, it is not correct or fair to say they assume they're gonna get the money and they can request.
They do, because last year they just sent a pile of invoices in and said pay it. And it was paid and then it got brought back to council and the council ratified it.
We'd be asking to provide invoices to justify the.
I know, but that's not the council asking, this is people in the office and it needs to come back to be in control by the council.
Um.
So I would.
No shopping, a thousand, thousand pound.
I want it scrapped.
Okay.
I'll propose it.
I'll second.
All those in favour?
Begrudgingly, ones of papers can come back for the.
Against, six one.
Because like, chairman, last year, we voted against doing the.
Most, most.
That was improving, isn't it?
Yeah, it's not a lot of money, I know, and we can spare nearly this year, I think that's a change, a very good P R. Um their pay here, yeah. Um is it only for the school and not for the sixth form college, that was what I was gonna say, because it might be nice for the prize then as well.
You mean the Harringtons?
Yeah.
Harringtons, sixth form college.
It's purely for the prize giving, which we give the town council, give a specific award for most improved student. So this, so this money is to go towards that, so specifically for prize giving, do you think that will pay then?
On the plaque.
Yeah, it was resolved in council, um I don't know what date it was, um to, to not give them money, but to, to write to them to see whether they.
A shield, I think.
Like a shield or a plaque.
Yes.
But we felt, we thought we'd leave the budget at a hundred pounds.
Don't know how much it'll be.
So have we paid last year?
No, not yet.
No, still, still.
I got along with that, but it's a permanent fixture, that, isn't it?
It's a trophy, it's a trophy.
A trophy, as I'm saying, because the rugby trophy.
We haven't bought it yet, it would be.
Is a proper rugby.
Well, if, if, if we're gonna, if we're buying, sorry, if we're buying a trophy to give as a prize, is a hundred pound enough? Because, because to me, if you're buying, if you're gonna buy a trophy, you buy the trophy once, you don't have to buy it again. So it's not an ongoing thing, so do we, do we, do we buy a better trophy? If we haven't bought it already, which I understood that was what was made. Do we put a little bit more in by a little bit better trophy that represents the town and this authority? On a, on a, on a one-off basis, because we're not.
As, as we go.
I know, it's a plaque, isn't it? Doesn't have to be brought back to council.
Can I propose that we, that we leave it at a hundred pounds? When council decides what to do, then if it's more than a hundred pounds, we take it out of reserves.
It was already decided for this year, that was resolved, that we were gonna buy that, that yeah, shield. So, so for your, um for your thinking, David, that has then come back for, back to council? So you've already resolved to buy the school, the plaque?
And does it get engraving?
I did, because it was a lesson of redemption.
Yeah.
And I did it for the medicine.
But moving forward, it could be.
Martin?
Yeah, I, I was gonna agree with Dave, I think it should be in the budget, just increased, but it needs to be a proper paper brought back to council. Because everyone knows there's been an issue with this and it's not because I'm against it, it's the rules that say we can't give money to an individual. Which I'm pleased the councils now agree. But I, I would like to see it increased because I think if we're gonna buy something like a shield and have things put on it like that, I don't think a hundred pounds is enough.
It will cover it.
And it's only gonna, it's only gonna a while, so I, I would move two hundred pounds.
Well, Joyce knows, because you did that shield.
Proposed by David, seconded by Joyce, that that increases a hundred pounds, all those in favour?
And then we'll bring the paper back.
I'm staying.
I think I'm staying as well, actually. Oh, those in fa, yeah, those in favour first of all?
And I'd like other schools considered as well, not just Patnance.
One, two, three, four.
Against, abstentions, three.
Sorry, I'm for.
You have to put your hand up if Mark knows, we can't count it.
Three, four?
Yeah.
Those.
Five, five and two abstentions.
Is that covered?
Yes, it's covered, yeah.
Right.
Cuts close footpath resurfacing, we approved, that's the, this year, we approved twenty-five thousand pounds. We haven't spent anything, but it will come, if it's, assuming it's done this year, it will come out of this year's budget, not next year's budget. So we spent nothing yet, but we should have nothing to spend in the following years, it'll be done. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
It's scheduled to be done in March.
It don't make sense because, because we, we resolved to spend, I think it was seventy-two thousand pounds on this footpath and the council said that it would, the fifty thousand would come out of reserves because we'd already earmarked that twenty-five thousand out of the one oh six money.
A budget is an earmark, if that twenty-five.
No, that twenty-five thousand.
That is a budget, not earmarked.
Yes, it came out of last year's budget, but that was minus, it was, sorry, this year's budget, yes, I don't mean to confuse you. But we minus on that document the money from the one oh six, which is in the Cambridge Buildings Society. So we have, we have fifty thousand pounds to find and the council resolved that we would recharge it after spending it next year from the reserves to the taxpayers over the next two years, so we need to add another twenty-five thousand pounds.
Because if that, if that's.
Well, then we're not putting the money back, we're not putting the money back in the pot.
Let me explain, please. We resolved to take it out of reserves, if we're gonna take it out of reserves, we can't show it in the budget. If we show it in the budget, then we've got, we've then got to, that will affect our preset demand and we, we won't be doing what council resolved. Because we're taking it out of reserves, it doesn't show in the budget, so just a little line again.
Charge it back to the taxpayers.
The budget, please, the chairman's speaking, please explain it. We budgeted twenty-five thousand, okay, so far we spent nothing. The estimated expenditure, we're gonna put that in a zero at the moment, okay? Because we're not quite sure what's happening. There's not, there's nothing in the budget for next year to anticipate it being done this year. If, if it happens this year, the estimated expenditure will be the full amount. And it will be twenty-five thousand pounds out of the budget plus the rest out of reserves. If, if, let me finish, let me finish, please. If it, if it doesn't start in this financial year for whatever reason and comes into the following financial year, that twenty-five thousand pounds will go into the reserves automatically, yeah? And it will all come out of the reserves for next year, but the reserves would have been enhanced by twenty-five thousand pounds. Does that make sense? So for the budget, we have to show that as zero in next year's budget, otherwise you'll be asking county council.
But what about when the council said they wanted to get the money back from, to pay back the reserves over the next two years? That's what I'm saying.
I can clarify, because it was my proposal, if I remember rightly, I said that if, if we, if we haven't got enough money, we could take it out of reserves and then reclaim it back over the next two to three years. That was, that was what, because we, we, we did say that we thought we'd got enough money to pay for it out of reserves. But my proposal was that we needed to topple the reserves, that is how we would do it, by reclaiming it back over the next two years.
But if you look at the reserves, yeah.
Well, that would use all the reserves.
It just gave us that caveat to reclaim it.
Can I ask, what is the final, I know you can't be accurate, what is the final figure we're looking for for these, these four pounds?
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two thousand.
Yeah, it's huge.
That's what I wanted to know in the first place, thank you.
Based on everything said, I'll propose that the budget is left at zero in that case, because we don't need to increase it, because we've already covered it.
Those all set now?
I'm just gonna say, I can see where Martin's coming from.
Yeah, okay.
Because what he's saying is, if we've already got twenty-five thousand budgeted and that goes into reserves, if we budget for another twenty-five thousand this year, that's fifty thousand, you haven't got to actually reclaim, but if we have to, we haven't got to reclaim back so much. So I can see, I can see where he's coming from, it's just whether we want to do that and not take it out of reserves.
But I, I was, I thought the council had agreed to do that and I might be wrong, but that's what I, how I could get from that meeting.
We worded it that if we haven't got the money.
If we could, we could put it in the budget, but it means our preset demand. If, if we could, we could put it in the budget, but it means our preset demand goes up to twenty-five thousand. So that would be a lot from thirty-eight thousand to fifty thousand.
So I'd leave it at zero, it's two hundred pounds, so then we'll reclaim it. Yeah, that's what we proposed.
Now, this, this time next year, if we found our reserve going down, then we'd have to like reset at that point. Okay, you're proposing, Adam, my second of David's second, so all those in favour? Unanimous?
So, that was the end of that, so we're now at total return expenditure. Did you wanna see where we are at, by the way?
She gone up.
Because we haven't changed.
Gone up.
And England got.
We're now, we're now going to increase to forty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty, two hundred and twenty. Whereas we started at two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety, we're now at two hundred and seventy-five thousand pounds. So we've, we've, we've got.
We have other areas, yeah.
Well, we, we can, we can correct all that next.
Chairman's allowance.
Why don't I say, why don't I say you're gonna say that?
You can pay twenty thousand pounds if you're ready to talk. Um, right, so we're on to total re, uh, disregard, we're on to other expenditure, shall we?
We have no agreed capital projects, so that's got to be zero.
Yeah.
It's the path for capital project.
It's not an agreed capital project, is it?
I don't know, I'm just asking because that's where I've read things, and I don't know everything.
Public Works loan board. I'll just round it up to five, five, one, oh, you can put it back to five, five, away from the Atlantic.
No, that's, that's paying back the park, isn't it? That was that for ten years, wasn't it?
What's that?
The play park in cuts close.
Which is now.
So we don't, we don't need to vote on those two, because we have no projects, we have to pay the loan back.
Other expenses.
What's that? What are expenses? Somebody tell me what are the expenses?
Yeah.
Four, four, oh, five.
Where that comes, where that comes from, Leon.
That was your shopping last year, wasn't it?
No, it's a new pair of shoes.
Last year, the local clerk said it was his slush fund.
I would have thought it'd be things like maybe batteries for clocks or light bulbs.
Yeah, yeah, other expenses is usually more like petty cash.
Name badges and event flooring.
Yes, sir.
Their last year. But this is that thing with the circus where we.
Remember, we had to, we had to complain, we had to put the, for the few days, they cost us seven hundred pounds.
If we only spent a thousand pounds, I'd leave it a few thousand, so I'd propose that.
Yeah.
All those in favour?
Yeah.
Unanimous? Chairman's allowance?
I know. No, no, actually, I, I, I agree, because I, I think.